Okay, we'll call the December 11th, 2018, meeting to order. And if you would join me in a moment of silence as we remember our students, our staff, and also, we've got some farm families in our system that the snow crushed their chicken houses, so their livelihood has been impacted negatively. And let us, just in this moment of silence, be reflective of the blessings we have. Thank you, thank you. At this time, we have the honor of recognizing Cooper and Reagan Metlock, and they're the children of Tyson and Megan Metlock, and Cooper is in Ms. Herman's first grade classroom, and Reagan is in Ms. Durney's second grade classroom. And they're going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So if they'd come forward, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Did a good job. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda, Dr. Hefner?
No.
Okay, need a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is adopted. This time's our favorite part of the meeting, where Dr. Jennifer Hefner leads our honors and recognitions.
Thank you Chairman Odom. I hope when I call you Chairman Bowman, you won't be offended. I have referenced Chairman Bowman for a year, and I'm going to have to have some retraining with our Chair and Vice Chair. But what Chairman Odom said is true. This is my favorite part of every month's board meeting, and it's an honor for me to recognize students and staff at this time. Tonight, we're going to be honoring and recognizing the creativity and artistic talents of our students. We are proud to present our holiday card contest winners in the following divisions: pre-K through second grade, third through fifth grades, sixth through eighth grades, and ninth through 12th grades. And at this time, I would ask Vice Chair Ryan to come up and help me, please, with these recognitions. Evelyn Barnett is a second grade student at Ellendale Elementary School. She is the daughter of Lee and Rebecca Barnett, and I would ask you to join me in giving her a round of applause. Please come forward. And everybody stay up here, because I have lots of great things to tell about you and what you get in those wonderful goodie bags, and then also, we'll get some pictures, okay? Ashton Curtis is a fifth grade student at Stony Point Elementary School. Ashton is the daughter of June Durham and Lauren Curtis, and I have to say that Ashton has won this contest two other times. Please come forward, Ashton Curtis. Olivia Perkins is an eighth grade student at East Alexander Middle School. Olivia is the daughter of Donna and Leanne Perkins, and I have to say that when I go to the Hidnite Center, it is not unusual that I see some drawings of Olivia's. She is certainly a very artistic student. Please come forward, Olivia. And Shair Del Judas is a ninth grade student at Alexander Early College. Shair is the daughter of Toby and Marble Del Judas. Please come forward. Audience, as you can see, we have some very talented students, and these are certainly four of our standouts. Please give them one more round of applause, and I'm going to... I'm going to tell them a few things in the goodie bag. Renee Mead, I may need your help, but actually, students, you have some of your cards, copies of your cards in your bags, that you can send to your closest friends and family. And then Mrs. Mead, remind me of some of the other goodies they'll find in there.
They just have some sweets and goodies in there, and then they also have their gift card.
Oh, wonderful. All right. And what I would like is a picture up here, but then I want you to stand behind your piece of art, and we want to get another picture, please. Okay? Oh, yes, yes. Okay, she'll want us right in the middle of that A. So Olivia, okay, there we go. Is that good?
Good.
Now stand behind your artwork, and we want another picture. And just for the record, I can't wait to send out the system holiday card tomorrow. It brings me great joy and a lot of pride. So way to go, students. I got a little ahead of myself. I...that art recognition is one of my all-time favorites. I forgot to recognize our newly-elected board member, and then two re-elected Board of Education members. If you would, please stand when I call your name. Newly-elected to our board is Mr. Matt Cooksey. Round of applause. And re-elected board members, Chairman David Odom... and Board Member Harry Schrum. And I look forward to working with all of you. Moving on in honors and recognitions, the next awards will go to those positive behavior intervention and support programs. Ten of Alexander County schools were recognized by the Exceptional Children Division of the North Carolina's Department of Public Instruction as part of the 68th Conference on Exceptional Children at the Curry Convention Center in Greensboro on November 13th, 2018. Alexander Central High School, Hidnite Elementary, and Sugarloaf Elementary were recognized as Green Ribbon Schools. Model schools in the county were recognized. Those included East Alexander Middle, Ellendale Elementary, Stony Point Elementary, Taylorsville Elementary, and Wittenburg Elementary. And then both Bethlehem Elementary and West Alexander Middle School were recognized again this year with the highest recognition honor of exemplar schools. Board Member Karen Bricksey, if you will help me in making these presentations. Again, Green Ribbon Schools, please come forward, and these will be the administrators and any staff members who want to join them. Alexander Central High School, Hidnite Elementary, and Sugarloaf Elementary. You all also get a banner, which I can't imagine you wanting to open it right now, but I hope you will in the morning at your schools. Okay, and Renee, how do you want to do pictures for this? All as one group, or in the three separate groups? How much room do you have in the paper, Micah? All one hall? Okay, okay. Stay up here, stay up here. Okay, then the model schools: East Alexander Middle, Ellendale Elementary, Stony Point Elementary, Taylorsville Elementary, and Wittenburg Elementary. Exemplar schools: Bethlehem Elementary and West Alexander Middle. Please come forward. These ten Alexander County schools were among almost 600 schools across North Carolina that earned one of the three levels of recognition. And I am pretty jazzed to say that ten of our eleven schools did this. That is pretty amazing. To receive any level of recognition from the State Department of Public Instruction, these schools completed an application process that included multiple reports based on behavior and academic data. The Alexander County schools that received recognition by the Department of Public Instruction did so because the faculty and staff at each of these schools demonstrated high levels of implementation based on positive behavior intervention strategies and evaluations. A job very well done. A round of applause. Do you want Board Member Bricksey in there? Look at how I'm volunteering her. Another round of applause. Our school system has been part of this statewide initiative since 2010, and of course, this year, we've had the most recognitions that we've ever had, so we're very proud. Board Member Scott Bowman, will you please come forward to help me with the next recognition? We are honored to recognize Lena Bar as the Alexander County Schools Exceptional Children's Teacher of Excellence for 2018. Lena is an EC teacher at Alexander Central High School, Taylorsville Elementary School, and the Student Success Center. She was recognized at the Exceptional Children Division's 68th Conference on November 16th in Greensboro, North Carolina. Lena received a plaque, special seating at the morning session, her name listed in the conference program, her registration and mileage were paid, and she received special recognition during the conference banquet. To be eligible for the Teacher of Excellence Award, the person selected must hold an appropriate license, have at least five years of school experience, must maintain a student caseload, and deliver daily instruction, and be a leader within the school. In Lena's recommendation letter, it states, "She is a well-organized teacher who keeps close contact with the students and their families. She becomes part of their family in order to help each and every child. Lena brings to her role as EC teacher a high degree of vitality and refreshment." And what that means is, it's a fancy way to say she's just delightful to be around. North Carolina's Department of Public Instruction Exceptional Children's Division recognizes one teacher or related service provider from each of the 115 school systems. One each from the Division of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and then the Division of State-Operated Healthcare Facilities, and one teacher or related service provider per region from charter schools. Before Lena comes up, I'm going to tell a little story about Lena, and I can do that because Lena's mother and I go way, way, way back. Lena was actually teaching for us at Stony Point Elementary School, and she had taught for a couple of years, and she came to me and she said, "Dr. Hefner, I just want to broaden my horizons a little bit. I'm going to pursue some other job avenues, but I don't want you to take it personally. It has nothing to do with being anything that's bad that has happened to me here in Alexander County." So then she came to me a couple months later, and she said, "Good news, I've been hired in Wake County, I've accepted a teaching position, and I'm going to move to Wake County and just see what the world has to offer." Well, I was awfully sad about that, but I did wish her well. And then I don't know how many months later... she called me again, and she said, "Dr. Hefner, I've made a terrible mistake. I've gone to Wake County, and it's nothing like Alexander County. And if you will have me back..." I remember her saying this to me. She said, "You can even hire me in a cafeteria if you have a vacancy." And I said to her, "Sweet girl, pack your bags and get back to me as quickly as possible. We are going to find a place for you," and it wasn't even in a cafeteria. She came back to us, and we hired her as an exceptional children's teacher, and truth be told, that's where Lena found her niche. That's where she found her truest calling, and she is a very talented exceptional children's teacher. So I am so thankful that you called me back. I'm so thankful we had an EC position, and I'm so very proud of you today. So congratulations, Lena Bar. Board Member Harry Schrum, will you help me with the next presentation?
Is that what hers is?
Yes.
Okay.
Lena, all these are yours. And Renee, you might want to get a picture of her holding this as well. This is what she received at the conference. Mr. Ryan Rao, sixth grade science teacher at West Alexander Middle School, was honored as the North Carolina District Seven Middle School Science Teacher of the Year at the North Carolina Science Teacher Association Convention in Greensboro, North Carolina. The award is presented to individuals in school districts to recognize excellence in science teaching in North Carolina, to teachers who exemplify excellent, creative, and innovative teaching of science. And if you have ever been to West, and if you've ever been in that room, you will see that he is indeed creative and has a lot of innovative teaching strategies in his class. As a winner, Ryan will receive an award and one year's membership in the NCSTA. And I have to say that every time I go into his room, I'm always impressed. Now he's actually growing trout that will be released, hopefully, in the spring. How are we doing? What's the survival rate?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one? Excellent. He has all kinds of animal heads and just different things. He started a chicken farm, for lack of a better description, and actually, board members have received eggs from those very chickens that they raised, from little chicks. All kinds of neat things going on in Ryan Rao's classroom, and this honor is very deserved. Give him a round of applause. Chairman Odom, will you help me with the next award? Mr. Joe Cornwell, Alexander Central High School teacher and coach, has been named the Cross Country Coach of the Year in the Northwest 3A and 4A Conference. He serves as the head coach of cross-country and assistant coach for indoor and outdoor track. Mr. Cornwell is a graduate of Alexander Central and UNC Pembroke. He has a teaching certificate from Appalachian State University in Art. Mr. Cornwell has been teaching and coaching at Alexander Central since 2007. He was also selected as the Northwest Cross Country Coach of the Year in 2012. He has coached 34 runners that hold times on the Top 50 Times List at ACHS. Fifteen of the top 25 boys, and nineteen of the top 25 girls on the all-time list, and personally, he is still ranked sixth all-time best time for the 5K at Alexander Central High School. I would ask you to join me in congratulating Coach Joe Cornwell. Coach, I want to read something that was submitted by your athletic director, Nathan Robinson. This is what it says. "Coach Cornwell is one of those coaches who truly cares about forming relationships with his athletes. He motivates through those relationships to bring out the best in the athletes he coaches. We are fortunate to have him coaching multiple sports at ACHS," and I would agree. Good job. And Board Member Cooksey?
Your initiation. You get to help me with the last awards.
Do what? Are you saying, "Thank goodness"? Tonight, we had a lot, but that's good stuff. Debbie Mitchell received a grant award from Energy United Bright Ideas for Reading Regardless, which was used to pay for e-readers to scan text and read aloud to students. The grant award was for $1,000. Please join me in congratulating Debbie Mitchell. And Debbie, you'll do a group picture, okay? Michelle Robinson has received two grants recently. The first grant was for four boxes of new coats for students from Lane Bryant Supplies and Coats. That grant totaled $550. The second grant was through Donors Choose, and was for beginning curs of handwriting for third grade. That grant totaled $120. Please join me in congratulating Michelle Robinson. And Andrea Austin was not able to be here tonight, but I would like to read about her grant. Andrea received a grant award through Donors Choose called "A Carpet Full of Compassion", which will be used to purchase a classroom rug and a set of character education and mindfulness books. The total of that grant was $680. Please congratulate all of these grant award winners. Chairman Odom, I'm gathering all my sticky notes and reminders, and I think we're good.
Great, great. Now, we're finished with the honors and recognitions, so the fun only deteriorates from here, but you're more than welcome to stay. Our next item will be our public comment, and Miss Mead, do we have any signers outside? Would you check the list, please?
Now it's candy time.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Now, one thing that I will say when we're in transition, I believe that Ms. Reagan, she wants to ask a question. If she wants to, I'll be more than happy to hear that. Not a thing to be afraid of. You even got some candy up here. If you're tough enough to lead the pledge, you can come right on up. Wow, that is a great question. I am so glad that you brought that to my attention, because I had no idea that an additional French bread dunker was three bucks. But I'll tell you what, today is your lucky day because of your courage, and walking up here on behalf of your sister, who took a lot of courage to ask the question and lead us in our pledge. As you grow older, you're going to learn about a thing that's called delegation. We've got a little surprise in store for you. What about if Dr. Hefner and our school's food service director, what if they came and had lunch with y'all at school one day? And you can ask them all the questions you want to about French bread dunkers? And I promise you that they will get you an answer. And if there needs to be an adjustment, we'll take their guidance and advisement and move expeditiously, because we do not want to be overcharging anybody for French bread dunkers. But I admire... But I admire you for your courage, because one day you're going to be a lady, and he's going to be a grown man, and you can be leaders in this community. But you've got to start somewhere, and you started tonight. So we're exceedingly happy for you.
I can't wait to have lunch. We'll get that scheduled, okay? Good. All right.
Thank you. Did Ms. Mead, did you have anyone else? Okay. All right, we have the consent agenda, and you've been apprised of the information early on. Could I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. I think we're at unfinished business, is that correct? Okay, we'll recognize Dr. Hefner regarding...
And I'm going to defer to Ms. Lingle. She's going to give a school report for Taylorsville Elementary.
I want to tell y'all, if you come to Taylorsville for lunch, there will be no shortage of questions, especially with first grade and second grade. So they are fun to be around. What a great night it's been so far at the board meeting. This is a fun time to be a part of Taylorsville Elementary, and I just wanted to share a few thoughts about what's been going on. And Chairman Odom and Vice Chair Ryan, I appreciate y'all allowing me to stand before you tonight. I don't have a clicker, so somebody will... Not a thing up here. But me.
Dr. Flores, your clicker.
So just wanted to take a few minutes, and we presented last April in the spring, and so I was able to, I was asked to switch this year, so we're going a little bit sooner than we normally do. But there are some awesome things going on at our school. So our mantra this year is do what you can't. And so we surround ourselves with that, in that we are pushing our students to go places that they haven't been and do things that they never thought that they could. And when it gets tough, they sometimes want to buckle under the pressure. And our awesome staff that we have don't take any excuses. And we have fifty-eight total staff at Taylorsville Elementary that serve our students daily. We have twenty-one and a half certified staff, and most of our staff is pictured here from the beginning of the year, opening school bash. We have thirteen classroom teachers, three exceptional children's teachers, three and a half specials, one phenomenal instructional coach, Kelly Teese, and then, of course, I'm the principal at Taylorsville Elementary. You know, we look at this picture and the statement that's there, there's going to be obstacles, there's going to be doubts, there's going to be mistakes, but with hard work, there should not be any limits. And that's sort of how we function at Taylorsville. Real quickly, our scores are continuing to move in the right direction. We are very pleased with our progress that we've made over the last four years. We have, in the last three years, either exceeded or met growth each year. And very, very proud of, even though we're still at that C in reading, if you can see here that we have made a ten percentage point gain in the past few years, and so we are moving things in the right direction. We use the analogy a lot at our school of Swiss cheese, and we feel like it's our job to fill those holes, beginning at the foundational level in K-2, and then we move forward. And once those foundational skills are there, then the growth will continue to happen. Very excited about our ninety percent pass rate in our science scores last year. That's up from fifty-six percent, so I give all the credit to our fifth grade teachers, Ms. Atwater, Ms. Houston, who really took that bull by the horns and made some awesome things happen. So overall, our school composite is at seventy-five percent, which is phenomenal, I think. We're going to continue to do whatever it takes to grow our students. And our thing that we say this year is gentle pressure, pride relentlessly. And it's that constant pressure of on those students and on this staff and on ourselves, me included as a leader, to find ways to make things just a little bit better and not be comfortable in where we are. It would be real easy to sit back and say, you know, we're doing all right the last three years. And we are, but we're not going to be satisfied with that. Just some of the few celebrations that we have, of course, we met growth, we were just recognized for PBIS model school. We have an intentional focus on building relationships, as this entire system does. We're not the Lone Ranger in that. This entire system is about relationships with each other and with our community and with our students. But at Taylorsville, we want to be visible, we want to provide support for each other, and we have continual conversations through PLCs, through PBIS, through our SST. And if I can throw out some more letters at you, I will. But there are tons of support systems in place that if something's not working, we look at something else. We look at something else. And because sometimes, no matter what you do, it doesn't work. And so we've got to go back to the drawing board and constantly, what can we tweak? It's just, what conversation can a different teacher have with that student to maybe get them to hear? And focus on how we do. Learning-focused schools is a continual conversation through our entire system, and at Taylorsville, we are discussing that through essential questions and graphic organizers and then PLCs, our student support team process, and of course, Kelly, I can't say enough good things about her. She provides professional development that is timely, and she does the research behind it. And with my support of her and this staff, if she says it and we're behind it, good things are going to happen. And so we're very thankful for that. And if she throws out a PD, these teachers are there, and they're hungry and they want to learn, and that's what makes the system great. For this year, you know, I said a minute ago that it would be very easy to sit back and be comfortable with where we are. And it's a beautiful place to be comfortable, but nothing grows there. And those of y'all know that I have taken on some challenges in my life at different times with races and marathons and different things like that. And it's very painful, but it's, you cannot grow if you don't push yourself. And so as a leader of this school, I hope to continue to push each staff member to grow, and as a result, they're going to push our children to grow. Rigor, that's a buzzword, but we take it very seriously. And we want to be held accountable for what we're doing. And we do that through the repetition and routine and structure. So many of the children at Taylorsville Elementary come from situations that there's not a lot of structure or routine. So when they walk in our doors and our building, it's the same, and it's consistent. And if Ms. Lingle says it, or Ms. Felton says it, or Ms. Houston says it, that's what it is. And that structure, we have found that children thrive in that. And tough love, but unconditional love. And we don't mind if they cry. It's okay. I cry sometimes, too. But not like Heather. Heather cries all the time. But we just cry together, you know? But we laugh together, and we get frustrated together, and we walk this walk together. And so for a couple of years now, we've been focusing on that speaking in complete sentences, and I think you noticed that. If you ever come into our building, you'll notice that. But we want to take that to the next level, and we've tried to add in some, having students reword those sentences in a different way, or adding words to increase the complexity of that sentence to help them synthesize what they're actually comprehending, the comprehension piece of it. Retell, recount, summarize, write. We write, write, write all the time. And if they can speak it, then they can write it. And that's going to transition into building that stamina. What we have found is that, you know, Taylorsville peaked a couple of years ago and did some awesome, awesome things, and now we're having to grow just a little bit every year, and that's hard. It's really hard to do. And so how do we build the students' belief in their self that, yeah, you're at seventy-eight percent, but you can be eighty-one? Or you're at, you completed three passages, but you can get that fourth one. It's that stamina, it's that not buckling under the pressure, that relentless pressure applied consistently. And so across our school, through something that we've implemented this year called morning meetings, it's some private goal setting amongst classrooms and amongst grade levels. Each teacher takes some time, at least two or three times a week, and just huddles their children, and they, Ms. Houston calls it in her room, a true circle. And it's very honest, and it's very open, and it's very connecting. And those children have formed a bond with each other that helps them pull each other along. Sometimes, they don't have those bonds anywhere else. And so we want it to be explicit instruction that's goal-focused for, you know, we're not a leader-in-me school, but we're finding ways to make them leaders in other ways. And through that goal-setting, we're finding that morning meetings, you know, we say, we have a school pledge, our roar pledge that we say on Mondays and Fridays, and it got kind of redundant and old, and so we're just saying it instead of every day now, Mondays and Fridays, as a unifying piece for our school. But yet, they are working individually on some grade-level goals that they have, and it seems to be working. And it's not only just academically, but it's socially, it's emotionally, it's, we are serving the whole job. And we want them to be, when they step in our doors, to be at a place that nothing else matters what's going on outside, that they're safe, because no four-block in the world's going to get solved, or no passage is going to get completed if they don't feel safe with you. And that's my job. Our auxiliary staff is amazing at Taylorsville Elementary. The frontline staff of the classroom teachers, nobody works harder than a classroom teacher in elementary school. It's amazing what they do and with the lack of time that they have. But our social worker, our school nurse, our community's and school's person, Kelsey Farrell, has just been, found ways to become amazing, and that program is critical to the success of students across this system. So I know that they're in the grant-writing process for that now, and if there is anything we can do to help solidify that, we need to, because things that are happening with her serving those thirty to fifty kids is changing their life. We protect our academic blocks, ninety minutes. We use treasure and rap and drawing for meanings, and then, of course, the morning meetings, and then we've already talked about ongoing PDs. So those are some of our goals. The other piece of Taylorsville that I just wanted to mention to you is, we have been so blessed by our community and the way that they have reached out to our school and this system. But the YMCA, First United Methodist Church, other faith communities, if there's something that our school needs, it is a phone call away. We have a back-to-school bash where First United Methodist provides every school supply for every student in the building. And what we're finding is that has lasted till about now, and when things start running short, for example, the YMCA provided headphones for all of our third, fourth, and fifth graders, and some of them were broken, and with a one-phone call, I had seventy-five more, just like that. That's powerful, y'all. They know what it means to serve this community. And so, of course, our grant recipients that you just recognized a few minutes ago, we have, our teachers see the need and find a way, because we all know the state plan is not coming, you know, it's going to get less and less, and so they're finding a way. And so far this year, we've raised, we've gotten over $2,800 in grants to serve our children. Every dime that we make goes back to those Cougar Cubs. Reading Partners serves our second grade, and then we have, with Kelsey Farrell, she's started a kindness club, she's starting a running group in the spring with Robin's Run being the target race in April, and then a character club. So lots and lots of awesome things that are going on. And just some pictures to refer back to, and I will share this slideshow with you if it hasn't been already, board. But this is three opportunities that our students have given back to the community. We just did, well, of course, the canned food drive that's system-wide. Our little school raised almost 3,000 cans, and we're very proud of them for that. And then just in the last three weeks, we've done a sock drive headed up by Ms. Derrmeyer in our second grade, and our students brought in probably close to 500 pairs of socks that we're going to share with a local medical facility, because a lot of their patients don't get a lot for Christmas, and so they wanted to, her mother works at a facility and said that would be great. And then, of course, our care squad partnership that we have with Alexander Central High School. Coach Carter brings in about sixteen to twenty of his athletes every Friday throughout the fall semester, and they read with our students and do different activities, and that has been a great partnership over the last couple of years. And then some benefits for our students through these community partnerships that we have, of course, the Cup Cafe, I highlighted that last spring, and I would welcome you guys to come to that anytime. What a way to make your day to sit down and have lunch with our students of the month. It is the first Thursday of the month, and I can send you the dates remaining if any of you guys would like to join us in that. Kelsey Farrell is also starting a program for the young men in our fourth and fifth grade, starting in January, called Guys in Ties, and she has solicited help from some local community male adults that's going to come in and just have some conversations with our guys and be a positive role model for them. And then, of course, the Learning Center. Wow. And I think, Dr. Hefner, you may have gotten an email about a big deal from the Learning Center that's happening this week, hopefully.
Yes.
We're partnering with Lowe's, and they're bringing twenty or so folks in for some projects at that Learning Center. We've got to figure out how to keep it, because it is amazing, the things that happen through that program. And so if we can help in any way to do that, please let me know. And so that's a little bit about what's going on with Taylorsville. It's starting to look a lot like Christmas around the building, so y'all can come by and see the holiday decorations, and the excitement is contagious. And we hope that when you visit our building, that you sense the learning that's going on, and that you sense the love that's there, and above all, that you sense that we care about the kids that we serve, because we sure do. And I, once again, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve. I'm exactly where I need to be, and I'm very happy for the opportunity. So as long as you will have me, I would love to stay. Can I answer any questions for you?
Sounds like you're doing a great job.
Very good. Okay, next we'll recognize Dr. Betsy Curry regarding a STEM plan and work in Alexander County.
We actually, in the sake of time, removed her presentation and rescheduled the committee area.
Well, I'm sorry, Dr. Curry, you will not get to present. Yes, you'll have to wait. Next will be our board and committee assignments for 2019, and this is an illustrious position that all of you can certainly put your name beside of and get it turned in to me prior to the January board meeting, and we will assign you some committees.
That is part of your agenda, is an attachment in your agenda. Was everybody able to locate that? Okay, perfect.
Do you want one, two, and three?
Yes.
For second and third choice?
Yes, yes. Your most desirable would be one, and least would be three. Look forward to the board serving on these various committees. Moving right along, I'll recognize Dr. Hefner regarding a vacancy in District Four, which is Sharp, Smiller, Sugarloaf, and Gwaltney.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. I need to officially announce that we do have a board member vacancy, and that came as a result of the resignation of Matthew Reese. Matthew moved and moved outside of the district in which he was elected, and his resignation has been submitted. So I want to officially announce that the Alexander County Board of Education is currently accepting letters of interest for a board member vacancy in District Four. The vacancy shall be filled by appointment of a person to serve until the next election of members of such board, which, just on a side note, will be... which, just on a side note, will be November of 2020. At which time, the remaining unexpired term of the office from 2020 to 2022 shall be filled by election. Qualifications for this board member. The board member must be a resident of District Four, and that represents Sharp, Smiller, Sugarloaf, and Waltney. And the board member must be at least 21 years of age. After verifying your address with the Alexander County Board of Elections, interested people are asked to submit a letter of interest and resume by February 8, 2019. Those letters of interest and resumes should go be addressed to Mr. David Odom, Chairman, Alexander County Board of Education, 700 Lyle Down Road, Taylorsville, North Carolina, 28681. And this will also be posted electronically on our website as of tomorrow and will be advertised in the Telsall Times. Board members, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Heffner, if you would continue with the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. This also is an attachment in your agenda. I wanted to let you all know that I will be submitting the required affidavit of K-3 class size to the Department of Public Instruction on Friday, December 14. This is a requirement of the General Assembly. The affidavit serves as an attestation that we are complying with class size requirements in Alexander County. Bullet number two, Board of Ethics Training with Attorney Chris Campbell has been scheduled for Thursday, January 10, beginning at 5:30 in the boardroom. Please put this date on your calendar and make plans to attend. If you have a conflict with that date, please let me know as soon as possible. Bullet three, the North Carolina Association of School Administrators 2019 through 2021 Legislative Agenda includes the following priorities, and these are not in any kind of rank order. The five areas that they won't address are to refine the A through F school performance grading system, to approve a statewide school facility bond referendum, to enhance safety by increasing recurring funding for security and student support personnel, to align the public school calendar with the community college calendar, and to continue to increase the state's investment in improving educator pay. And that leads nicely into bullet number four. Representative Jeffrey Elmore would like to meet with the Board of Education members one evening in February. He thinks this meeting would be better suited after the long session starts. So please let me know which of the following dates will work for you. He has listed every Thursday in February being the 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th. We would start the meeting at 5:30. And the purpose of the meeting with Representative Elmore is to obtain information pertinent to issues we face in the Alexander County school system. Bullet number five, I want to take this opportunity to thank our school custodians, administrators, and maintenance and transportation departments for the work they did to remove snow and ice from parking lots and sidewalks. And they've worked tirelessly yesterday and today. While the weather call on Monday was the easiest one I've had to make so far, 12, 14, 16 inches, whatever your tape measure measured, while it's beautiful, it can be a bear to move, that's with a shovel or with a piece of equipment. And as I visited each school site yesterday, I was so grateful to have a dedicated group of individuals out there in the cold working to get the snow and ice off of our parking lots and sidewalks. I want to also thank Russell Green for keeping me in the loop with the weather forecast along with law enforcement officers and emergency management personnel. It requires a team when we make an inclement weather decision. And I'm very blessed to be part of such a wonderful team. Wanted to remind everyone that our students and teachers, last day before the break is next Thursday, that's December 20, with students being dismissed at 12:30 at the high school and middle schools and at 12:45 at the elementary schools. School will resume a normal schedule on Wednesday, January 2, 2019. It seems so strange to be saying 2019. It seems like just a month or so ago, we were starting to say 2018. But everyone is encouraged to enjoy this much deserved break. Board members, I emailed you late this afternoon that our board visit to Wittenburg Elementary School is scheduled for Friday, January 4. We will meet in the school's office at 11:30 that day for lunch and a school tour. And I would just ask that you mark your calendar and please make every effort to attend. The students and staff love it when the Board of Education comes. You're pretty big celebrities in our school, so please make plans to attend. Also, another email that I have sent to you late this afternoon pertains to a resolution. And in the event, we want to submit a resolution in January requesting school calendar flexibility. I've shared some information with you via email. Please review the information and communicate your feelings to me about this resolution later this week, whether you would support that resolution or not. And if a majority supports it, I'll move forward with that and have it ready for the January meeting. Tomorrow is an optional workday for staff. Staff should report on a delayed opening at 10:00 a.m. And the rotary shopping spree that was scheduled for tomorrow has been rescheduled to Monday, December 17. And then Board Member, excuse me, Chairman Odom and I talked, he has a conflict with the January 8 board meeting date. And I would ask if you have any problems with us changing our January meeting date to Tuesday, January 15. Do you have any issues with delaying that one week? Okay, if not, an official notice will go out tomorrow to all school system employees. And I would ask that you mark your calendars as well. That meeting has been moved from January 8 to the 15. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. Next, we will recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey. She is our CFO regarding some Board of Education policy revisions.
We have four policies coming back for second reading this month. I did receive a request for clarification on one, but that didn't make any changes. So I'm going to request that we approve these on second reading.
Okay, you have the policies before you. Could I have a motion to the effect to adopt these policies?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say yes. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll also recognize Ms. Mahaffey for some additional policies, second reading.
We had a new policy come before the board for first reading last month. And I bring that back for second reading. I did not have any questions or concerns about the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. Need a motion regarding this policy, please?
Move to approve, second reading.
Okay, we have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor say yes, please?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to thank Kristen Jolly. She did a lot of hard work on this policy. I thought did an excellent job.
Okay. And also, we have a policy revision for the first reading, Ms. Mahaffey.
Yes, we have six policies for first reading. I will request input from the principals and directors and bring those back next month.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Our next item will be Math 1 and Math 3 final exam scores. And we'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson, Director of Accountability.
Good evening, Board. I come before you to seek approval on how to proceed from here. So Math 1 and Math 3 scores this year will be delayed. These are due to new course of study and content standards for Math 1 and 3, which means for our students, new summative assessment tests. Math 1, we've been informed from the state, will return raw scores only, meaning a percentage, excuse me, not even a percentage, a number of correct items on a test. And Math 3, we will not receive any return scores this year for them at all. So students will not receive any state-calibrated scores until fall of next year. With your consent, a parent letter with this information will be sent home. And after meeting with Dr. Curry and the high school administrators, who this will directly affect, the following slides will propose our recommendations for handling the final exam scores for these two courses this year. So due to the small sample of Math 1 students testing in the fall as compared to the spring, the accountability department must have the total sampling of scores to create a reasonably accurate conversion table. Thusly, Math 1 students testing in the fall will receive an incomplete or an INC. on their report card until after spring of 2019 math tests are complete. And then we'll be able to put them into the conversion table and get an accurate score. With all scores submitted, the district can convert the raw scores for the student report cards. The exam grade for these will remain 20% of the student's final grade. Students are required to take the Math 3 exam, even though they will not be receiving a score. Math 3 henceforth is an EOC, and EOC scores are the critical component to a school's accountability requirement. As a new assessment, there will be no reporting of scores at the student level. And once the state board has approved the scores and converted the achievement levels, we will receive that information again in fall of 2019. Schools at that point will provide parents with each student's score and individual student report, breaking down this assessment. The semester average for these kiddos this year will be the student's final grade of the class working from the semester. Excuse me. So are there any questions I can answer regarding this student information?
So the students won't be given a score for Math 3. They're just going into a room, taking a test. Do you, would you anticipate, well, first, will they know that?
So they, they, I, yes, that's our plan. And I have a letter which should be included in your board docs that explains that. So that hopefully will be going home as soon as students return, if approved.
So I guess my, my concern is that if they know it's not gonna be reflected on their report card, are they gonna take it seriously and really apply themselves? And if there's any measure in your plan to motivate them to do their best, even though they're not gonna get a grade for it?
Certainly, that is a concern that we all share. We discussed with the principals and Dr. Curry some, some various options that other districts are doing, including testing them with a local assessment and using that, and then having them test again, including just a participation rate for showing up. But we kinda came to a consensus that this was probably the best plan because we do want to be transparent and honest with them and not add another standard just because we won't receive scores for them this year. We wanted to do what was truly the best scenario we could come up with for them. It's not the easiest for us, but it is the best for them.
Thank you.
Certainly.
You need, you mentioned you needed consent, do we need to?
To proceed with the plan that has been proposed.
Okay, I need a motion on the floor regarding the proposed plan, please.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into closed session. Wow, my agenda must be like old or something.
You must be getting upset with me.
I guess that's why. I will, I will have to stop using draft agendas.
I am here tonight on behalf of Hidden Light Elementary School to present the NC Star School Improvement Plan for a vote. As you know, we presented it in October. We told you about it in Canada in November and put it out there for any kind of feedback. No feedback was given. It is very consistent with the school improvement plan that they have submitted to you. It is basically taking some of the data and the gold out of that school improvement plan and putting it into the electronic format that the state is requiring. So I ask you to approve that plan tonight so that we can go ahead and submit it electronically to the state.
Okay.
I have one question before we take action. Dr. Curry, I know that Mr. Draper is ill this evening and couldn't be here. But when they had an opportunity to seek input and feedback from parents, did they get a whole lot, or do you know?
I asked him if they had any feedback at all, and he said no. And I, I think that's due to several reasons. One is because it was already consistent with the school improvement plan that had been written in which they had parent feedback. And it really is not as detailed as what our school improvement plans are in our comprehensive needs assessment. So it was almost like going through the motions.
Okay. Well, since we almost skipped over her presentation with the draft agenda, I will entertain a motion to adopt her proposed plan.
So move.
Second. Okay, all in, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Can I leave, or am I gonna have to present?
Actually, I'm gonna read off the non-draft agenda at this time. And we, at this time, we will need a closed session. We'll need to go into closed session. But we also need to remind folks of the change of our, our January meeting date. That will be posted. But this concludes the public portion of our meeting. Call for a motion to adjourn. Close session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.